If you please rise and join me in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You please remain standing. Uh, we're still trying to work through the details of the invocation. Um, so I'm gonna have to get ahold of the police chaplain or fire chaplain to cover me. But in the meantime, I'll go ahead and, uh, open us up in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to meet this evening. I just pray blessings over this country. I pray that you guide our leaders, uh, at the highest levels. Allow them, guide them, help them make the best decisions for our country, uh, as well as those around the world, Lord. I just pray that you're with our community. Fill it with hope, love, and, and, uh, just truth, Lord. Guide the conversations throughout, but bring us together at the same time. And while we're together, allow us to build community spirit and, and friendships. Build family, Lord. I just pray that you're with us this evening in this meeting. Guide our thoughts, our actions, uh, in making the decisions for this community. We thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Egner.
Here.
Mr. Abrams.
Here.
Mr. Samuels.
Here.
Mr. Aggra.
Here.
Mrs. Van Cleve.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Wilson tonight.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Egner.
Yeah.
Mr. Abrams.
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels.
Yay.
Mr. Aggra.
Yay.
Mrs. Van Cleve.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Approve council meeting minutes for January twenty first, twenty five. So moves?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Abrams.
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels.
Yeah.
Mr. Aggra.
Yeah.
Mrs. Van Cleve.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Egner.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move into presentations. And I'd like to invite Chief Herson, uh, to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We're here tonight with a recent vacancy within our full-time ranks. We've selected the next full-time member of the fire department. We're here to have the mayor swear him in. Uh, Mayor, you may remember Shane from his interview. Did extremely well. Um, and unfortunately, you know, that was about a year ago. It couldn't work out, but we threw some hard work of Captain Rimroth reaching out to him and doing a lot of conversations. Uh, we were able to steal him from Westchester and, uh, put him to work here with us in Harrison. So, without any further ado, I would appreciate if you would swear him in. Shane, if you would come forward, please, sir.
So if you please raise your right hand. I state your name. Family swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Ohio. And that I will enforce the laws and ordinances of the city of Harrison, state of Ohio, United States of America. And that I will in all respects observe the provisions of the charter and the ordinances of the city of Harrison. And that I will faithfully and completely discharge the duties of the office upon which I'm about to enter. It's always exciting being able to swear in a young man or woman, um, to a career in Harrison. We've been very, uh, lucky to have, uh, both our police and our fire department full of career officers. And we really look forward, uh, to a long career here in the state of Harrison.
You guys can step up here and take pictures if you want.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, we're not in any hurry.
Yeah.
Don't worry, I'm gonna step back and then you can get all just him.
You can be family.
This is your copy.
Well, so just stay there and they're not done yet.
Chief, this is your part.
Shane's fiancee, right? He's gonna pin his new badge on him. Also, while she's doing that, I just wanna acknowledge, uh, Shane's dad out of respect for him and his position. He's a captain with, uh, Colrain Township. Worked with him many years. He's, he's been in Harrison throughout his career, probably more times than we can count, right? Helping the citizens of Harrison. So I just wanted to acknowledge you for, uh, being here tonight. And lastly, uh, before you partly, is, uh, Captain Rimroth is gonna present you with a new helmet. Something we do anytime we swear a new firefighter in or promote somebody, we present them with a new helmet as they start that new chapter of their career.
Let him hold his helmet.
Congratulations.
Welcome. Happy to have you. Congratu- welcome.
Congratulations.
And while our meetings are fun.
Yes. Go celebrate.
It was nice meeting you all. Have a great evening.
Thanks for coming. Congratulations again.
Okay, the next presentation is, I have a proclamation to read. I was contacted by a community member, uh, who has a, um, a child, uh, that has a congen- that were born with a congenital heart defect. Uh, they reached out, explained the situation. And next week is actually Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week, uh, the seventh through the fourteenth. So I wanna read a proclamation to recognize that. And Chief, thank you for preparing the documentation. A proclamation establishing February seventh to February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five as Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week. Whereas the health and well-being of congenital heart patients is of paramount importance. And whereas each year in the U.S., more than forty thousand babies are born with congenital heart defects. And whereas the medical community has identified congenital heart defects as the leading cause of birth defect-related deaths. And whereas medical research can provide more identifiable means of the origins and symptoms of congenital heart defects. And whereas there is no cure for congenital heart defects. And it is a long, a lifelong disease requiring ongoing specialized care. And whereas fewer than ten percent of adults with congenital heart defects are receiving recommended care. And whereas it is con- it is crucial that individuals, planning a family, fetal clinicians, obstetric physicians, pediatricians, and all those in the medical field have a greater understanding of the potential for congenital heart defects. And whereas Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week provides the opportunity for patients and families affected by this condition to share their experiences and knowledge so that the general public may be aware of how this defect defect affects our lives. Now therefore, I Ryan Grubbs, Mayor for the City of Harrison, Ohio, do hereby proclaim February seventh to February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five as Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week.
Thank you.
And I would like to invite Jean Wilson to the podium, please. American Legion.
And Mayor, we'll need you, please.
Exercise night.
Should've stayed up there.
Thank you. Mayor, on behalf of the American Legion Charities Fund, um, it's our great pleasure and honor to, uh, present to Harrison Mayor's Fund our monthly donation, and tonight is twenty-four hundred dollars.
Yeah, I guess Jerry's not here to give us directions on taking pictures, so. Thank you, Patty.
I'll just cover for him while he's gone.
Yes.
He's here in spirit.
Yes, he is. So, uh, okay, we will go ahead and move into invited guests and visitors. Uh, Ms. Shannon Eck from the Harrison Public Library. I made my stop up there today. And I encourage everyone else to get their winter reading material.
That was one thing I wanted to talk about. We're having something called a winter checkout challenge. It's for the grownups, um, since the grownups are not part of the, um, summer reading anymore. Um, you can, um, sign up at the library. You get a little coaster and you get a coupon for, um, an upcoming book sale for the friends of the library. You get ten percent off. And then, um, you'll pick up a little challenge board like Mayor Grubbs did. And if you do five of the challenges, you can come back and get this nice soup mug. They're very nice. Uh, we've been doing that the last couple of years. I've been very popular, so if you think you'd like a mug, you'll wanna come back, uh, in the next couple of weeks because we will run out of the mugs most likely. But that is for all the adults. Anybody eighteen or older is welcome to participate in that. Um, also, we do have free tax preparations still at the public library. We go through the United Way. It's a volunteer service. Um, just to sign up, you can, uh, schedule an appointment at, uh, five one three, three six nine, six nine zero zero. And it's on a first come, first served basis on the tax appointments. Uh, we do them on Saturdays at the library. Um, so if you're interested in that, um, it's a very popular service. Again, please sign up. Uh, we also have a couple of new programs at the library. We have a family game night. That's gonna be tomorrow at six o'clock on Wednesday, the fifth. Um, whole family can come, registration's not required. We also have a bi-monthly homeschool STEM program. And the next one of that will be March, uh, twelfth. That one, you do need to sign up for, um, so it's been very popular so far. You can sign up, uh, by calling the library or registering on our website, which is W W C H P L dot org. Thank you.
Very good.
I love you call that a soup mug. For me, that's coffee.
Yes.
For me, it's half a cup.
Thanks, Shannon.
It was good seeing you, Ms. Shannon. Have a great evening. Okay, we'll go ahead and move into the business session. Uh, the first item is to vote on a resolution adopting National Incident Management System, uh, NIMS. Uh, this is something that, uh, that both the police committee, fire committee, and civil defense worked on for an extended period of time, uh, through the second half of last year. And this will be adoption, the adoption of the program. And, uh, it will allow us to line up with both county, state, and federal programs to make sure that we are able to receive funding if there is an incident that occurs.
I shall move. Second.
We have first and second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Samuels.
Yeah.
Mr. Aggra.
Yeah.
Mrs. Van Cleve.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Egner.
Yeah.
Mr. Abrams.
Yeah.
Next item is to vote on an ordinance, amend the amount appropriate appropriated to various funds of the city of Harrison.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Take a pick on which one.
It was Ray. It was Ray, second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Would you like to discuss, sir?
Uh, yes, real quick, there's only two appropriations on here. One is for, uh, eleven thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. And those are two appropriate monies for the purchase of, uh, additional flock cameras. Uh, but those were provided through donations from JTM and Kiwanis, so we do wanna thank them for their partnership. And the next item is a twenty thousand dollar item, and it's to increase the budget for salt purchases. Uh, given the recent snowfall that we had, it pretty much depleted our salt reserves. So they're just backfilling the reserves.
Uh, it did not pretty much deplete. It did completely wipe out our salt. So we needed to make sure that we do have some, just in case it does snow again this year, which could happen tomorrow or it could happen in May. So, but we will have salt on hand. So roll call.
Mr. Aggra.
Yeah.
Mrs. Van Cleve.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Egner.
Yeah.
Mr. Abrams.
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels.
Yay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for executive session for personnel matters. It's O R C one twenty-one dot twenty-two G one, please.
Okay, we will roll call for that? Yeah, okay. So I need to make a roll call for adding the executive session.
I'll make the motion if that's what you're waiting on.
I'm sorry, we need to make a mo- make the motion to add the item first. So let's take the roll call for the motion to add an item. So roll call, please.
Mrs. Van Cleve.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Egner.
Yeah.
Mr. Abrams.
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels.
Yeah.
Mr. Aggra.
Yeah.
Should've eaten dinner before coming. Now, we'll make the motion to add the executive session. So roll call.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Egner.
Yeah.
Mr. Abrams.
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels.
Yeah.
Mr. Aggra.
Yeah.
Mrs. Van Cleve.
Yay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good hearing that energy. Okay, we'll go ahead and move into reports if there are no other items.
We have something else we have to vote on.
Is there another item we need to add?
You said we didn't need to add it. You would just... Remember what I talked to you about in your office?
I just go ahead and bring it up, I'm sorry. The executive session will be in regards to personnel matters and...
Right. This is to vote on a new vice mayor.
Oh, geez. So the last meeting, thank you, Jean. So the last meeting, usually the first meeting of every year, we, uh, go through all our administrative responsibilities. And we did not elect a vice mayor for twenty twenty-five. So we need to go through the process. You guys need to go through the process to select a vice mayor, and then we'll need to, uh, move forward.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Ryan Samuels.
A second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Would anybody like to nominate anyone else? Nope. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Egner.
Yeah.
Mr. Abrams.
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels.
Epstein.
Mr. Aggra.
Hey.
Mrs. Van Cleve.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Jean, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. I just wanted to get out of the job, sir.
I'm about as red as my tie right now.
No, you're fine. It's been a long night already.
So now we'll go ahead and move into reports. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Um, so the first item that I have to discuss, I did have an EMA board meeting on January twenty-seventh. Uh, a lot of it was the discussion of the adoption of their emergency operation plans. We actually went through it. They're, they're in the process of finalizing all their stuff. And then it'll come out to us, uh, to finalize that part of it, so we have everything in sequence. So, um, they continue to move forward on their new location over in the tri-county area. Uh, it's actually drywall is going up. It took quite a while to get the, the electronic and fiber, uh, infrastructure in place. They finally have drywall going up. Uh, so, uh, hopefully by the end of this year, early spring next year, they'll be able to move into that location, uh, which should make it more accessible to the entire county, especially the northern side of that county, uh, or Hamilton County. They continue to do great work, um, in evolving with the times, recognizing, uh, new and, and different threats, uh, to our community. They continue to evaluate that. They're very strategic, uh, in all those situations. So, uh, really continue to be excited to work with Nick and his team and, uh, stay on the board out there. Uh, next item, uh, and I, I think, uh, Mr. Abrams will actually discuss this a little bit, so I'm not gonna steal his thunder. But I did have an opportunity to attend the OKI luncheon, uh, with Mr. Abrams. Uh, it was a great, great event. And really provides a lot of information and resources that we can bring back to the community. Uh, we did have a senior center bus dedication. Harrison Township, uh, donated or bought a, a new bus for our senior center, um, attendees. Uh, so we did hel- hold a ribbon-cutting dedication ceremony for that. And then they all piled on and went on a, went to an event outside of the city and just had a grand old time. So very excited for them and their ability to get throughout. Uh, we really ran into a lot of problems. We used to contract our, our, um, transportation services. And many times throughout last year, that transportation service never even showed up, let alone called. So, uh, we really appreciate Harrison Township, uh, taking a step to buy that bus and make it available for all our residents. And then the last item that I just wanted to touch on, we did begin discussion around opening the Doug Dunaway, um, track for the season. Uh, there are just a couple of things that I wanna continue to work through, have some discussions with both our police, fire. And then make sure that we get a, maybe a social media blitz out around some rules and regulations. Uh, because I do not wanna be harassed with, um, motorcycles leaving the track area and riding up and down the road. So we wanna make sure that we get those rules out and, um, make, make everyone very aware that if they're coming here, we just need them to follow the rules. But we'll announce the opening of that track, uh, as soon as possible. That's the last item that I have. Our regular law director is not here. Mr. Ryan Laflama is here this evening. Do you have any updates for us this evening? Magnificent. Mr. Egner.
I just have a, really one thing. Um, the tech and media committee met tonight. We, and we really just discussed, um, MPATH has started their initial, um, interview process of all the, um, all the city officials and as that keep, as that goes through, you'll start seeing more, uh, more communication from the city. Um, and then we did not, the H R committee did not meet tonight, but, um, Kim did want me to, uh, put out that we are, uh, actively interviewing, uh, candidates for H R position. And I, I believe they have three tomorrow night. And that's all I have.
Very good. Mr. Abrams.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Um, I wasn't gonna talk about OKI, but since you left it to me, I will. I figured, I figured you were gonna roll right into that and I wasn't gonna have to say anything. So, um, you and I did attend the lunch, uh, over in Kentucky. And the, um, the head of Kentucky Transportation was there and gave a, a good forty-five minute presentation. And it was the biggest luncheon that OKI has had. And probably their inception, they had over five hundred people there, so it was a great turnout. But the backstory to the whole luncheon was the, the bridge downtown that they're gonna rebuild and how that's gonna work. And that the commerce, basically that goes over that bridge is, I don't know, sick, well, I think it was six percent of the total amount. Um, there's so much commerce that comes over the bridge from, from Cincinnati to Ohio. So that was a big takeaway. I didn't know it was, is, is much as it was, but it, it is that six percent, so.
Yeah, six percent of the United States total GDP crosses that bridge. And that is just mind-boggling to me. It, it, they were talking all those statistics and the amount of money on top of it that's gonna take to build the bridge. Holy shit.
Right.
Just on the OKI, I think it's important to point out that, you know, we attend these, these luncheons and everything because of the funding sources that are available to us. The Dry Fork Road Overpass, uh, part of the proceeds, how, how much do we get through OKI for Dry Fork? Yeah, so we'll get approximately four point five million dollars in funding for the Dry Fork Road Overpass. So the time that we go over and have conversations with board members and other, other, uh, participants in OKI, it allows us the opportunity to network and, and build relationships. So we have those, those resources available and they understand what's going on here in Harrison, so.
It, it, it's a great, it's a great program. Uh, you appointed me to, to, to be the liaison there last year, and I'm doing it again this year. But like you said, uh, it's great networking. And I will segue into, um, the, we were, we wanted to, we, in, in one of the committees, we talked about the Dry Fork, uh, Overpass at seventy-four. And I'm not gonna throw out all the numbers, but I'll just say this much, that the construction costs alone will, will be about, uh, a little eight point three million dollars. Um, with the federal match, the local share, and the O W C funds. Um, it'll take our match, or at least our costs, along with the township, to about, uh, four hundred thirteen thousand. So those are just preliminary numbers, but we just wanted to put those out there to everyone. Um, your public service announcement for the week. And, um, we are trying to get better, um, at getting out information. And the mayor and I have talked multiple times, especially about this project, and it's the Edgewood Road project. And the road is closing. And I know people in the past, um, the city had been slow to put out information. The road's gonna be closed February tenth until June twenty-seventh. Now, the backend date, we all know, um, is on weather permitting, so it could be closed even longer. Um, it has nothing to do with anyone up here or the mayor. On when the road reopens, it, it's really due to weather. So, um, I wanted to hit those high points. Due to the Dry Fork Road, uh, project, there has been some talks about trying to have a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit on Dry Fork Road. And if you know anything about Dry Fork Road, it goes from twenty-five to thirty-five to forty. So, um, there are some talks, and we're gonna have to talk to some other people about just getting it all to be thirty-five miles an hour. And the last discussion, or at least the last thing I'll report on, is due to the large snowfall, everyone knows we got, we had a bunch of snow and we didn't know where to pile it. And we tried to pile it around everywhere we could. And we found that at least downtown on the downtown streets that, um, it was not effective for the streets department to plow and have to continually come back and plow. So, um, we wanna make it more effective for the, for the street crew. So there are some things that we're gonna discuss on trying to, uh, maybe move cars certain days of the week on one side of the street and then flip-flopping them back to the other side of the street. So, um, at least be aware of that. I'm not saying that anything will be, um, in stone this year, but we're definitely looking for, definitely for, uh, you know, for fall, for the next snowfall. So that's all I got, Mayor.
Very good. Mr. Samuels.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Finance committee did meet on January twenty-eighth. As always, we did review the, uh, revenues and expenses. The year-end has not been closed out yet, uh, so this is a preliminary review that we completed. So there's a couple more items Kim is, uh, still has to finish as of the meeting. Um, so, but some noteworthy items that we've seen so far. Uh, on the revenue side, obviously the big drivers, municipal income tax, our, uh, property taxes from Hamilton County, interest and, uh, investment interest and licenses permit, they all came in as, as strong numbers. They did exceed their budgets, but we are always very conservative with those numbers. So we're happy with where they did come in. Most departments did stay in line with the budget, uh, with slight variances across all funds. Uh, one fund that we were keeping an eye on, the water fund, I pretty much reported on it every year. It ended up about two hundred thousand in the red. This was expected. Um, and we did complete a rate study. Uh, it is be- currently being reviewed by the finance committee. Uh, but I would expect to see a rate increase coming before council within the next couple of meetings. It's just that we're trying to settle on a number to bring the, uh, water fund back to an acceptable level and also being able to handle future capital, while current operations and future capital needs. So we're taking a look at that. Uh, the wastewater fund was over budget, uh, this year, but it was, but it was expected because of the Edgewood Road Sewer Project that Doug had talked about. Um, we did receive that bond fund the year. fund the year prior, so it's just a timing issue across the years. And then the Dry Fork Overpass, just planning for that, which Doug provided some very good news from a Finance Committee standpoint. We also talked about the budget amendments, which we approved earlier, the $12,000 for the cameras and the $20,000 for the salt that we desperately need. We talked about the rate study, the Community Center project, which I think Kim came to a prior council meeting, talked about the restrooms, so that has been put out the bid. The gap conversion, Clark Schaefer Hackett Accounting Firm has been... Complete them for 2024. There was also a discussion on the pilot payment we're receiving from the Hillwood Building. The upcoming year will have a reduced amount because there was an overpayment in 2024, so that's just being applied to the next balance that's due. One big thing I want to mention is the city did receive an upgrade to its credit rating from Moody's. Moody's cited the city strengthening financial position supported by growing revenues and conservative budgeting as its rationale for the upgrade. So, that's a big win for the city because it allows, it strengthens, the rating does allow us, if we were to go out and secure some sort of debt financing, bonds, things like that, we have a better rating. It makes it easier for the city to do that if we need to. Tony kind of touched on the HR payroll position. That's currently being filled. The city also engaged with a group called ACA Prime to assist with the issuance of 1095 forms. Fire Department, the Fire Department, there was a discussion while Finance Committee was presenting some information regarding salaries and the discussion around the staffing at the Fire Department. With an increase of runs over several, past several years, the staffing minimums have not changed in the department. The Committee continues to review the financial impact for the additional staffing for full-time and/or part-time fire personnel, and it's been tabled for future discussion. One item that was also discussed is the city applied for $100,000 Economic Development Impact Grant for Willow Park. If approved, the city will need to contribute $20,000, but we will receive $100,000 for that grant to provide upgrades down at Willow Park. You might be very happy about that.
Was that it?
Did Willow Park?
Which park?
The one by the river. So, also, there was a discussion around Enterprise Drive, possibly purchasing a piece of property on Enterprise Drive to allow for the infrastructure upgrades that are needed to access the quarry property, to further facilitate development back in that area. Also, the Economic Development Group has engaged the Bradley Payne Group to assist with the research and management of possible TIF or RID agreements that the city may engage in. And, Mayor, that's it for Finance Committee. Sorry, I flew through that one. That's it?
No, very good. I was just getting comfortable.
Economic Development.
True, good point. Mr. Agar?
We were given updates on several roads, and one I wanted to bring forward, and I was there, finished the design work on Dara Avenue, and they'll be doing a full tear-off and redo of that street, and that should start this spring, and it's moving along as hopeful. It'll be quick. Can't wait to see that one done. That's really all I got tonight.
Very good. Ms. Van Cleve?
Well, I feel like Ryan Samuels tonight because I recently took over chair of Economic Development. We met this evening, so it might be lengthy. I'm very sorry. We recently signed a contract with American Structure Point for the city's five-year comp plan. We're working through our timetable, scope, and we'll be forming a steering committee very soon for that. We do have several grants I'd like to talk about that the city recently received. The Gateway Grant, which will provide electronic reader board signage for our city, and we have a new facade grant that we were awarded $50,000 on. That will go to Market Street Grill, Huesman's Poultry, and H&R Block, and that will assist these three businesses with beautification of our city, which we never turned down. The district is currently looking at donating $12,000 to the city for revitalization. We're looking at benches, flowerpots, things that will actually go back into downtown. We are working on events such as the food truck rally, ladies on the loose, farmers market, Second Saturday, family events, and also evening adult events that everyone will like. We have recently moved, as a city, to enforcement tracking. What it is, is it's a complaint-based system and will react as each complaint is received. What you can do is you can go to our website, and you can enter it electronically, or if you go to the left on our website, there is a phone number for each complaint that you want to report. And once we receive that complaint, we will then send somebody out with an assigned number to take a look at what the complaint is and work from there. Good news for us, Nectar has recently received their Certificate of Occupation today. They will be bringing product in over the next two to three days, and then we will see a soft opening. This Saturday, February eighth, is the Harrison Dunk. It's a fundraiser for our Harrison Junior and Senior Special Olympics, so we would like you to please join us this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at the Harrison Fire Department to see the mayor and myself, as well as others jump into a frigid pool for a really great cause. Right, Mayor?
Yeah, and I think that both chiefs...
Chiefs?
...may be jumping in also.
One chief.
Oh, you're going to jump twice?
Okay. Perfect.
That'll work.
I have one more little thing. Our Tree Board, I had asked permission if we could add a few new members because some of our members will soon be aging out. So, to the Committee for Tree Board, we have added Mike Ziegler, Beth Harnest, and Mary Ann Lake. So, I welcome them, and we have our Arbor Day celebration planned at the Harrison Public Library. Thank you, Shannon, on April 22nd at 7:00 p.m. More information to follow on that. They knocked down my final recommendation.
What is actual Arbor Day this year?
I believe it is the twenty...
Is it the 22nd?
Second.
Is that the actual?
Yes.
Okay, so I need to make sure that I get a proclamation read at the first meeting in April for Arbor Day, so we meet our Tree City...
Okay.
Obligation. So, as we get closer, just remind me, we'll get it prepared and...
So, Arbor Day falls on the day we normally meet for the meeting, so possibly we could do it at the Arbor Day Celebration?
I could read the proclamation at the Arbor Day Celebration.
That might be nice. Okay, I'll put that in my notes. And that is all I have, Mayor.
Assuming I'm not out of town, but I'll check. Okay, Mrs. Wilson?
If you are, your vice mayor could do that.
Sure.
That was not discussed.
I thought part of being the vice mayor is you had to get dunked too, so why don't you go ahead and...
That's right.
Go ahead and...
And I noticed the other three people sitting over there, even though Mr. Ziegler's but normally. Mrs. Wilson?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Since this is the first Tuesday of the month, it is Be the One. Please reach out to your family members, your neighbors, all veterans, to see if they're okay. Remember, be the one to save one. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. If there's nothing else to discuss, we will adjourn to executive session.
I'd like to say something.
Please, go ahead.
I heard the date, February eighth, and I was reminded that's the last day of Huesman's Chicken is going to be open. And it's a business I started going in when the library was there, and Mrs. Beasley was roaming around the aisles, and Houston's been there quite a while, two generations, and they'll be shutting their doors February eighth.
It's very sad. I can remember going in there as a kid, and we went there for chicken and the meat market for beef, and then we'd go to the bakery for bread. So, it's going to be different seeing something other than Huesman's Chicken being there, and good luck removing the smell of chicken.
But it's staying in the family, and it's going to have a beautiful facade.
Absolutely. So, we wish them all the best of luck. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn to executive session.